Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Norwood Planning Board. My name is Rob Bamber and I serve as Chair of the Board. The board is present and the meeting is therefore called to order. Tonight's proceedings will go as follows. Public hearings will be opened by reading the legal notice into the record. The applicant will have the opportunity to make their presentation to the Board. Board members may then ask questions of the applicant. Once the Board has concluded its questioning, I will open the hearing to the public for comment. All members of the public in attendance who wish that you ask a question or make a comment must wait to be recognized by the Chair before speaking. Once recognized, be prepared to state your name and address for the record and speak loudly for all to hear. All questions and comments must be directed through the Chair and I will call upon Board members and/or the applicant as needed to respond. The Board will then move into a period of deliberation where it will determine whether or not it closes the public hearing, moves to a vote, or continues the public hearing to a later date. A few quick reminders before we begin. We request that participants in this evening's meeting remain respectful to attendees, Board members, applicants, and staff. Please be concise in your comments and presentations to ensure that sufficient time is available for others to comment and for the Board to deliberate. Please turn your phones to silent and refrain from side conversations so that all participants in the meeting can hear. Thank you.
Yes?
Mr. Chairman, due to the fact that on the agenda tonight, there's really nothing that is time-sensitive as far as time tonight, nothing was publicized or people. So if Mr. Collins is here and he's here for the box, the...
No, no. The meeting in a box is really for you guys to be able to participate in the comp plan. Joe is attending to listen in on your conversation about those only changes.
Then why don't we, while Mr. Collins is here, because I think the meeting in a box will take up more time and things like that, while Mr. Collins is here, we don't want to take up any more time from his... Congratulations, by the way.
Thank you.
Being a new father and I'm sure you want to get home to change items. So if we could take those out of order and or talk about him while Mr. Collins is here and then we can let him get on his way, if that's okay with us.
That sounds good to me.
So our first item is discussion of potential technical correction to the BPH zoning.
Would you like me to give an introduction?
Sure.
So in between the last time that the Board met and now, it's come to our attention that there is a question of interpretation for the zoning for multifamily housing in the Boston Providence Highway District. Just as a brief refresher, in 2021, the Planning Board amended and Town Meeting passed a series of zoning changes that created the Boston Providence Highway District, two mixed-use overlay districts within the BPH, and allowed multifamily housing in the context of those mixed-use overlay districts. The intention at that time, which we can confirm looking at all of the presentation materials, the discussions and meetings that were held in the course of that public engagement process, discussion at Town Meeting, correspondence and documents internally between staff, the intention there was to allow multifamily housing in the context of the mixed-use developments in those two overlay districts, not generally in the Boston Providence Highway District. And so footnote 13 to the table of uses was created to clarify that multifamily housing wasn't allowed use in the Boston Providence Highway District by special permit in the MUODs. Recently, you know, in responding to a question about allowable uses in that district, we had to take a closer look at it to respond to a developer. And the building commissioner and Town Council were in agreement that the way it's written is not as explicit as I think the Board and Town Meeting would have liked it to be. And that actually the only defensible interpretation of the zoning bylaw as it's written in footnote 13 is that multifamily housing is allowed throughout the Boston Providence Highway District by special permit and is not limited to the mixed-use overlay districts. Does that make sense? I know we're getting into the weeds with zoning. Is everybody following so far? Okay. So again, this has kind of all been a discussion between Town Staff and Council in the last couple of weeks since the Board last met. And I talked to the Chair about this and we thought it might be good to bring this to the Board and recommend a potential zoning change for May Town Meeting. We still have time to submit to the Board of Selectmen. We still have time to advertise. We, as you know, already submitted four articles that we've spent, you know, a series of months working on. The change that I drafted and sent to you in your packets makes what feels like a very minor change to footnote 13, but it more or less is the insertion of the word "only" to further clarify the intention here, which is, again, multifamily housing to be permitted in the BPH only in the MUODs located therein. Town Council's reviewed this and agrees that it achieves, you know, that goal of limiting the multifamily housing to a specific area, in this case, two specific areas. And that's before you. I can answer any questions you have, but that's kind of the short and sweet version of what you have before you.
Yes, Ernie.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thanks. Just to add on to Sarah, I was, since this came before, you know, me, I really was racking my head and I believe all of us were on the Board at the time. I think the Board was the same Board. I might, I think I was Chairman at the time of this. And the intention on the Boston Providence Highway, and I really was giving this some thought, I says, did we, you know, what was our intention back then? And it was always to keep Route 1 commercial. And we went through some, a lot of considerations, a lot of discussion, that we should have some residential component. We looked at four potential places. We went down to three potential places. We finally settled on the two, which is the Everett Street and the Moore Street, basically, the Vanderbilt area of the two. There was a third one that was up for consideration and we thought that we should put some residential, that those two areas were the two that would, one probably pass Town Meeting, which was a big, and made the most sense for any kind of residential component. But it was, it was always the intention, and I believe Town Meeting agreed, that the intention was that Route 1 was the business commercial. That was our commercial lifeline, if you, for, I don't know if that's the right term for it. So, you know, little things, words have consequences and I think adding this in cleans it up. Sarah has gone over it. You said, Dave DeLuca, Town Council has gone over it. And this would clear it up. And I just wanted to, you know, I thought, well, did we, did we want to do this by maybe by special permit? Did we want to allow other housing in the night? I said, no, the whole purpose of us, I'm repeating myself here, the whole purpose of Route 1 was commercial and that we would allow, we needed a little bit of residential component. We thought those areas were okay. They don't intrude uptown or in residential areas. So I support it and think that we should pass it on.
Great. Yeah, I was also wrapping my brain trying to remember how or why. But again, I think with this addition of, is it just one word?
It's a couple, just to make the sentence work.
Yeah.
It's really "only" in the MUOD located therein. So it's like "only" and "located therein" are the kind of pivotal three words that change that sentence structure.
Yeah, because I do remember going over everything so extensively for so long trying to put this together.
For what it's worth, my impression is not that this was an oversight. My impression is this was written and the belief was it accomplished right what we set out for it to do, its syntax right. Yeah, I don't think this is like an oversight or a careless error of any sort. I think when it was written, it was intended to infer and it just isn't strong enough. And unfortunately, when you're interpreting zoning and, you know, Gary Pelletier and I do this all the time, you know, when you get a proposal for a new use, this happens a lot, you don't have every use specified in the zoning bylaw. And Joe can confirm this. We sit down and we look at word for word, you know, does this fit here? Does it fit there? What is the actual? So sometimes it does come down to one word really changes the meaning. So I really, I don't think this was an oversight. I do think that the intention here was for it to mean, you know, that it was limited to the MUODs and unfortunately, just the syntax isn't strong enough.
I agree. All right.
Debbie did raise her hand.
Debbie, are you online? Did you raise your hands? I think you're frozen.
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay. Still by special permit, Sarah, in the two areas?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. My, it's my only question.
Great.
And this doesn't change any of the other regulations that the bylaw offer for development in those mixed-use overlay districts. And that's another, kind of speaking to intent here. The Board, in all of its zoning in the last five years, wherever it's allowed more multifamily residential, it's always coupled that with a package of very carefully thought-out regulations on, you know, height, about setbacks, transitions to residential abutters, percentage that can be used for commercial, I mean, parking and open space, a lot of careful regulations. There are no regulations in the bylaw for any multifamily housing development that's in the BPH generally, but not in the MUODs. There's plenty of dimensional requirements and that careful zoning is all there for the MUODs, including a maximum density. But for the BPH, there are now external kind of regulations. This really was all intended to focus into the MUODs. So this clarification kind of preserves that original intent of Town Meeting when it was passed.
Sure.
Sure. Well, Mr. Chairman, I should say, Mr. Collins is here.
Mr. Collins.
Let me get this input on this.
Yes, thank you for having me tonight. Ms. Dixon brought this to my attention, I believe about a week ago or so. And tonight, I'm just going to talk about some of the economic development benefits of the employment centers along Route 1. Norwood is unique among a lot of suburbs. We actually, our workforce specifically actually grows during the day, a lot of suburbs around Boston, all over the country. They tend to shrink during the day as they move, as they commute into the major employment centers and around here would be Boston or Cambridge. Norwood is different. We actually grow, in 2022, we grew on average about 3,600 people a day, which is really quite fantastic for a suburb. In addition, a large reason for that is the Route 1 corridor, the employment centers we have, which includes the Vanderbilt Industrial Park, which would be, which is impacted by this, by this issue that Ms. Dixon brought up. We also have, a lot of the Route 1 corridors, as well as a lot of our commercial properties, also have a quite a significant multiplier effect, you know, improving, or cancel a lot of the other small businesses in Norwood Center or in University Avenue or anywhere early in town. Norwood also has a split tax rate, so commercial and industrial properties pay roughly $24, right now, $24.06 per $1,000 of assessed value. Residential pays $10.52 per $1,000 of assessed value. What that really ultimately means is if you look at the total valuation in town, commercial, industrial, personal property equals about 24% of the total valuation of our property in town. But the tax levy, SKIP, represents about 42% of the real estate tax and personal property tax revenue that we generate for the town in Norwood. Residential's 58% compared to the total valuation, which is 76%. So it has a very real financial impact. Basically, Dixon, I've actually talked about, you know, if, if the Boston Providence Highway District were to be developed with, you know, several apartments, in the short run, it would be a financial, it would be a benefit financially for the town, but in the long run, there would be some, some issues. So if there's any questions about that, or I can stick around a little longer.
My wife wants a tray of Joe's, Joe.
If you looked into it, we're still be happy to have it.
I agree, Route 1 is, it's well-traveled, it's our economic engine, I mean, for a lot of, I'm very fortunate to have it, really, and should keep it going.
Yeah. Do you need a motion to?
To move it forward, I think we do.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Thank you.
Yeah, so if the Board is so inclined to move this forward to the Board of Selectmen, you would need to take a vote to submit it to the Board of Selectmen for inclusion on the May Town Meeting warrant. Before you do that, though, I, if you'll indulge me in a moment, just to be clear about something, and I would want to say this before Town Meeting, you know, if this gets to Town Meeting as well. This, this is a fast review process as far as zoning amendments go for this Board. And I think I noted in my memo to you in your packet, this is a faster process than I'm typically comfortable with. I much prefer the, than you took with the other four, you know, that you've submitted, which is six months of discussion and review and engagement with the public when that's necessary, careful review and re-review and re-review. And that's twofold. One is to avoid errors and oversight and to make sure that all the words mean what we want them to mean. And then the other part is to make sure that the public is part of that process. So this is, this is a quick turnaround for us, it's certainly a quick turnaround for me. And I, I would still recommend that you move forward this and that's because I think this change brings the bylaw in keeping with the careful process that you all engaged in back in 2021. The intent that you brought to Town Meeting, and that was communicated to Town Meeting, was that it would mean this very specific thing. And so I think this change is a correction that restores what Town Meeting already voted on and was the result of that long, kind of very careful process. So I just wanted to be able to throw that out there because I know I've made a name for myself talking to people in public engagement sessions about the importance of being proactive and taking a nice long time to think about your zoning. This is inconsistent with that message, I will agree, but I do think it's the right move to be able to preserve what Town Meeting already voted on.
And we will have an opportunity through, and like any zoning article, we'll, we'll have to have a public hearing.
Yeah, so I would schedule the public hearing for this on April 14. So we'll submit that to the newspaper.
Well, we can vote, I'm sorry, we can vote to recommend it to the Board of Selectmen tonight.
So I would move to forward this proposed change. Is it just footnote 13?
Yes.
The change in footnote 13 and the provision to remain consistent with the spirit where we approved back in 2021. I'd move that this be forward to the Board of Selectmen to be...
I'll second that.
I got a motion and a second. Any further comments? Seeing none. We'll have to do a roll call. Ms. Olmwood, how do you vote?
Is she frozen or just staring at you?
Okay, Debbie Olmwood, yes.
Brady Batschkoski, yes.
Or Tom Holt again.
Ryan Hashees.
Rob Amber, yes.
Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Thank you. Good luck. All right, moving on. We're going to jump into a comprehensive plan, meeting in a box discussion.
Everybody knows what a meeting in a box is at this point? Yes?
They do?
Okay, perfect.
Actually, Neil, can you describe it to me?
Yes. So a meeting in a box is a small group discussion for the comprehensive plan. It's an opportunity for residents to give feedback on the parts of Norwood that they love, that they want to see preserved, that they want to see grow, identifying challenges in the community and generally identifying their vision for Norwood in the next 10 years. So the meeting in a box is a kit that we're actually distributing to residents to be able to host their own conversations. So rather than it always being a meeting held here by the Steering Committee or myself, these are designed to be done by folks within their own families, with their neighbors and their friends. We give it people everything that they need to host a meeting and then they can jot down the notes from the meeting and send it back and everything will be incorporated into the comp plan. So I'd like to take the opportunity, with the Chair's permission, to have one of these meetings together to give the Planning Board an opportunity to directly participate in this plan, which will eventually be asked to approve. And then also, I brought extra meeting in the box kits. I'd like to give you all homework assignments to host your own meeting with whomever it is you please, your friends, your family, your neighbors, what have you, and send that back to the Steering Committee for a little bit.
When would you like to leave here?
So the deadline right now for meeting in the boxes is to be returned by the end of March, but we are planning on extending that deadline a bit. So I would say in the next two months would be fantastic. So Activity 1 is all about special places. So this is kind of a popcorn brainstorming session, you know, jump in to kind of share your community's special places. So this could include special natural landscape features or built places like shops, restaurants, community spots. So what places would, if lost or damaged, significantly change the character of Norwood that if they work on?
Lewis's.
Shattuck Park.
Shattuck Park, awesome.
Is that Shattuck Park? Is that iconic?
Hi.
All right, can I ask a quick question, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Really, spit it out. Oh, Debbie.
So places that are historic and we wouldn't want to lose them?
Not necessarily historic.
Not historic.
No, so for, for me, it might look like the baseball field at the Murphy, because that's where my son plays with his buddies after school.
Oh, like Kelly Ball.
Yeah, exactly. Or, and he left, but it could be Lewis's, right?
See.
Having...
I'm not laughing.
Having a, having a place like that is a part of our, our fabric of the community.
So it's probably a given that all town buildings and stuff like that are, would be off the table, I mean, and historic.
This doesn't have qualifiers.
Doesn't have qualifiers.
What in Norwood is special to you? Just full stop.
The common.
The common, yeah. The look of the common, the parents of the common.
Norwood theater.
Kyle Square.
Route 1.
How many have been turned, people have actually had meetings in the box while they still have a connection?
We've had just about under 10 so far.
About the Garden of Mylar.
Community Garden.
Really?
I'm going to throw one out that's off, off the wall. The railroad station. Underused, yeah. I don't know who owns it.
But if it were gone, you'd be upset.
Yeah, I mean, it's been there my whole life.
It's been years ago, didn't it?
Yeah, there was an ice cream guy in there or something, I don't know.
Oh, that, the...
If I had the money, I'd buy it.
Depot building at Norwood Central?
Yes, yeah, I mean, it's just been there forever.
Ever since I've been here, it's been empty.
Yeah.
It's used for something.
Or what used to be the...
Oh, shit.
What?
Hate it. Hate it, hate it, hate it.
What?
There you are.
We hate Debbie.
The State came out to talk to us about that, at the train station, Ernie. We had a representative from the, with Sam down at the Civic and, do you remember that, Sarah?
I wasn't there.
Yeah, so there was a earmark for funding to support a study, like a planning study for that building.
To keep, to do something with it? Yeah, I agree. I'm for it. I think that the building is...
Norwood Museum.
The jail. Also underutilized.
They do.
Should have thrown it in. It's used for storage. There's good talk.
There is still an old cot in there.
Yes, upstairs. If you ever gone upstairs in that place, it's pretty spooky. But, you know, I always, there was some talk at one point to putting a Norwood museum in there and...
Good idea, Ernie, why don't you get on then? All those fabulous pictures of yours.
Yeah, you can spin the oldies.
But I would hate to see that building come down.
Caroline.
Caroline, the bells, the bells. Exactly, good one.
Okay.
Rob, what you got?
I'm done, I can't hold a connection here. Oh, hate it.
Debbie, you can jump in on the chat if you'd like.
The roses.
Yeah, you can take it.
Apple Street roses. Apple Street roses. Yes. What about the beach at St. Tim's like?
Doesn't want to go it.
I know, but China, imagine making hours.
You know, I, I mean downtown, you'd love to preserve the Theater Building, obviously. I like the idea of preserving, you know, I mean, there's, there's talk of, you know, there's something maybe going on at some point with the bowling alley, but the building used to be the old AMP building, the Vico's is. You know, that was, that was old AMP building, that's a nice looking building.
I think the bowling alley should be parked as a special place. It's still there, it's not open anymore, but it's still there and I think it's...
I've never had a chance to do pickle or whatever this is called.
Time capsule, huh? Can you talk about specifically, right, like a specific private property?
Sure.
The Winslow House.
Oh, that's, that's the, the Willard.
That's the Governor Allen mansion.
Governor Allen. Winslow House is actually across from him, it's a white house, the Winslow's.
Oh, it's great.
On the, on the corner of Laurel.
Big green.
Yeah, it's Laurel.
Yeah, the big tree.
I think, I think that was an old Winslow House, you're thinking of the Governor Allen. There's a lot of, there's four or five, you know, I'm getting off the track here, but years ago, when I, I believe it was even when Steve Costello was the planner, we had talked about this mansion byline, it didn't go very fine, but that we were, four or five houses, Dr. O'Day's house was one, you know, that we would, we would preserve, we would change the zoning and allow like condos in it, but the outside had to be kept the same. And, and that got, that got...
We did, we did pass that.
We eventually did do that, yeah. And we picked four or five. I'm going to, the, even though it's on private property now, it's the Forbes Mansion. The people in the town don't get a chance to see it, unfortunately.
It doesn't exist.
But it exists and maybe somewhere down the road, when Moderna does something with it, maybe they'll have an opportunity for people to go up and see it again, I don't know.
How about...
Husband.
I think my work is done here. Ernie's pitching for historic preservation and trees. I think I can...
Not trees.
We should trees.
We're gonna take that liberty too. We're gonna take the, and I don't want to see the pumping station on.
Oh, you're killing me, Ernie, you're killing me.
What about Froggy's?
Oh, Froggy's, of course. Yeah, that's a town, I mean, the town maintains it, the town, it's a town owned.
Without Froggy's?
Public skating.
That's like the east of Norwood.
Yeah, that's our only public skating spot. I mean, the kids skate on Gao Pond, but, you know, that's pretty much controlled, the town controls it, they have the fishing game club there.
My kids run Froggy's.
Yeah, oh yeah, we all play.
All right, any more before we move on to the next activity?
Well, I think you're looking at all uptown, I think you're looking at all of them, the buildings, though obviously the town hall and, and the, I personally love, I think it's kind of run down now, but I personally love Bernie Cooper's old building across the street there, Alec Arizone did at one point, I don't know who owns it now, David's bridal shop, it's right across from the Carmen. David's bridal shop was in there, I think there's a couple of nail salons in there now or something, but that building used to be a nice, good looking, nice old building.
How about this, Firehouse? OCC isn't it?
Yeah, the old town owned, town owned.
Are we gonna have one with the planning board, or you just want us, I have one scheduled in April, if you'll extend the date.
Yes.
Are we gonna do one with the planning board, is that what you're doing now, just throwing out names?
That's what we're doing now. And then, when you submit yours from April, that's also great, perfect.
Okay. And you're gonna extend the date through the end of May for people to do?
We haven't picked a date yet, but I think throughout April's a safe bet.
Okay. All right.
Any last couple? So, the next activity is a vision of Norwood's future. So, I'll just read this part out. "A community vision describes what community members want their community to look and feel like in the next decade. It's meant to be hopeful and aspirational. It paints a mental image of what the ideal Norwood will be like in 10 years. A vision helps Norwood reach for goals above and beyond what may be expected, and discover possibilities that may not have been apparent before. The following questions are offered to guide the conversation. We can choose to answer some or all. Imagine the ideal future. How do you picture Norwood in 10 years? What does the town look and feel like? What do you hope would be the same or different? What could be added, improved, or reimagined? What might support feelings of community connection over the next 10 years? And what would that residence value about the community?"
Can I throw in, while I still have a connection?
Sure.
I think the Space Center, even though it's privately owned, is a big draw for the town.
Oh, that's so random. Plus ready.
So, what, what?
So, let's start with the first one. How do you picture Norwood in 10 years?
How do I picture it, or what, how do I, what would I like it to look like?
What would you like it to look like?
I think you're gonna go with...
And it could be one word, it could be an idea, it could be...
I think that you wanna continue to grow the commercial, the commercial business smartly. I think you, I think that we're kind of okay, you know, we have the, Joe is economic development, right? You know, I think that we're actively, and I appreciate the fact that we have that, that we're actively seeking out businesses, you know, that we're not just waiting for them to come to us, we're actively seeking them out. I was tongue in cheek saying to them, my wife wants a Trader Joe's, I mean, you know, but, you know, these are the kind of things that he does.
He does. He does a really good job.
Yeah, and I think that a smart growth on commercial, continued residential growth, good schools. I think that we have a lot of good things going for us, we have a great recreation department, there are great opportunities in the town for kids for recreation, there are great opportunities for other things. I know apartments are something people don't want to hear, but I think, my own opinion, and I've said this many times, if they're done correctly, smartly, look good in the right places, they're fine, they're okay. I don't know, I'll get back to you. Ms. O'Wood?
I think one of the things that I would like to see is, along with growth, that we retain the historic New England charm, and I think we can do both. I really believe that we can do both, we can grow and we can remain charming.
So, we heard, another little update on the master plan last meeting, that the town is positioned to grow, and to Ernie's point about they're needing to do more residential development, I'd like to see some percentage of that include homeownership. It's such an upward mobility for many people, it's a major aspect of how people build their personal wealth, I think, I would like to see some element of development. I know there are market forces at play and we can't legislate this, but I'd like to see homeownership be factored in to some of it. Nothing against apartments or the rental model, I just, I think, as, you know, I have kids that are gonna merge into adulthood in not so distant future, I can't doubt them by this point, you know, when things are pointing. And I'd like to see more young professionals that may have worked in the Boston area, in Boston Cambridge, taking advantage of the fact that we have the train stations and choose to start their lives here, maybe they'll stay.
Of rejuvenated downtown, like more, more variety.
I was just gonna say...
There's so much, there's so much. As much as we like downtown, rejuvenated downtown, and I think that this, we'll address as a planning board, as we look at the downtown overlay district, and, I mean, that really needs a good shot in the, you know, we have Main Street, but, you know, some of the, you get down into Day Streets and you get down on Broadway and so, we need a good shot in the arm, and again, my own opinion is that when you have people, businesses will find them, not the other way around. And going back to question number one, places I'd like to see staved, the old Norwood press.
Oh, who's that?
The old Norwood press building, in the war space.
Doorage.
It's the storage and there's something in there. I mean, to, something that Debbie always says, I mean, I could see that becoming loft apartments or studio apartments or...
What's under now?
As a, as a storage unit and...
Maybe still apartment.
No, it's, it's the big brick building there, the old Norwood press building, right on Washington.
Sure.
And I would hate to see that come down, you know, it's the tower, the turret, and I could see that someday being a loft apartments and similar to the...
Something like, space center stuff.
David Dunn's factories.
Where it's more interactive.
Yeah, yeah, I could see that for, right, for some kind of mixed use. I'd hate to see that building come down.
Agreed.
Agreed. That's a great building.
In 10 years?
Yeah.
The Norwood hospital is completed and operational, and the whole area really kind of is developed, the whole building is fully occupied and... There.
And as we go, that overlay district more developed towards medical support, you know, I'd like to see that.
I mean, that'll draw some business.
Oh, yeah, that's a, that's a big thing.
That will open up. I mean, that'll draw...
Lacky development because there's no hospital.
You gotta figure there'd probably be a couple of hundred employees there a day, you know, that are gonna come to Norwood.
And use the train walk.
Yeah.
What about this one? What might support feelings of community connection over the next 10 years? Kind of an intangible thing to measure, but what parts of the community would need attention to kind of foster that connection with residents?
Well, again, I'm thinking off the top of my head, but this is something we tried. There are parts of this community that are not part of, part of the community, we... I know, and I don't know if this is, I shouldn't say this or not, but there's a large Indian population in the Windsor Gardens area. We tried, for the 150th, we tried to get them involved a little bit, it was very difficult to get them, but, I mean, there's a large population in Norwood that almost seems to be left out of activities and, you know, Norwood Day, and Norwood Day has been great, and it's been wonderful for 20 years, I mean, it's phenomenal, but I think that there's gotta be other ways to, through, I don't know, through, I'm not smart enough to tell you how to do it.
That's okay, it's okay if we don't have the solutions, but we have like the vision and the goals. So, like more...
I mean, the more ethnic days, I mean, the tribal school did it one time, I don't know, they used to do it, where they, and the ethnic groups, and every ethnic group would have a table, and there'd be a Polish table, a Wanyi table, an Italian table, Syrian table, you know, an Irish table, and, and maybe through the cultural council, and maybe they do this, and I just don't know, through the cultural council to do more, even neighborhoods, you know, you know, the Prescott School neighborhood has a something, and the Cleveland School has a something, and, you know, competition and paint the best pumpkin or something, I don't know, whatever it is, but, more than just athletic teams, more than just athletic teams.
And I, may I?
Of course.
I have lived in a lot of communities around Boston, Norwood was my, my last stop, and I, I hear what you're saying, Ernie, but I think that Norwood with all...
We lost Debbie. There you are.
There I am.
Go ahead, say it again.
I, I think we have a great base, and people have, if they want to engage, they'll engage. So, I, I think we, if we continue to do different things, I keep harping on the Space Center because I have some young people in my life who are bringing other young people to the Space Center, and it's fun and it's interesting and, you know, that's something, we need the under 40 crowd, and they like that kind of stuff. So, that is my, that is my thought. I see Derek shaking his head, so you can probably still hear me.
Yes. And I, and I agree. Listening, and first we get. Finish your video then, take some bandwidth.
Ernie's touching the button so he can get rid of me. You doing that to me, Ernie?
No, no, but it's a good idea.
All right, any last thoughts on this one before we move on?
No, I'm probably gonna come up off the top of my head and stuff, yeah.
All right, so this next one about living and working in Norwood. Again, you can choose to answer some or all of these questions, but just to get the conversation going. Imagine the ideal future for Norwood's residents, housing, and businesses. Who lives in Norwood? What different types of housing are available? Examples include multifamily housing, smaller homes, rental housing, affordable housing, missing middle housing, and more. What kinds of jobs are available in town? And what types of businesses would you like to see, and where are they located? So, we've answered a couple of these here, and we want to see businesses that support kind of entertainment, perhaps for all ages, something that Debbie mentioned, more ownership opportunities in the housing growth. What else?
I think we have a really mixed housing, I mean, we got a little bit of everything.
We have a lot of them.
We got a lot, we got a little bit of everything. We got apartments, we got duplexes, we got triple duckets, we got single family, we got...
So, this is less of condos. I'd like to avoid the Needham tear downs.
Yeah, we, so far, we've...
I mean, the only things that are coming down are dilapidated type, you know, see, 'cause you're approximately one.
Oh, or old lever.
Yeah, but it's not like, there are certain communities where people buy beautiful, perfectly valid, viable houses.
To tear down.
Four thousand square foot mansion.
The zoning that you've proposed to section 5.4 for May will help with that. Not that it's a huge phenomenon here in Norwood, the lots are smaller, so I think that naturally it makes sense of protection, but I think that...
Needham was the go-to, the poster boy for tear downs. They were on...
Their lot west of, is Linkin and the maze across from the high school, those neighborhoods are fundamental.
But Needham for years, they started, they were brutal.
You could have a little, little techy, you know, some crossy.
Built out to the corners of...
Yeah, exactly.
Debbie, answer your hand up.
Debbie?
To Ernie's point, it's a great point, Ernie, and it's, it is affecting Needham in a lot of negative ways.
Brian?
Am I still there?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
But Sarah, isn't, I mean...
So, would the, what's the question again?
What types of jobs do you want to see available in the town? What types of businesses would you like to see?
I think we're okay with pizza places, and I think we're okay with nail salons. I think I counted 30 places you can get a pizza, yeah.
I think we have nail salons.
The world is going away from retail, so, which is unfortunate, because on Main Street, you know, you know, nobody's putting a dress shop on Washington Street anymore, I wish we, you know. I think that we really need to go after, you know, the high tech, the bio, we're fortunate with Moderna, we're fortunate with Factor Mutual, I'm sure there are a couple other ones out there. The problem with retail, and it's such a, in today's world, very few retailers stick, you know, except for supermarkets are big, you know, but the small guys, they just don't last long. But I think the actively pursuing...
Would you like to see more small businesses?
I would love to see more small businesses.
That could, that could be our response here too, is sustainable, small business typeface.
But there are very few that are, I mean, other than sub shops and nail salons, I mean, it's like...
Yeah, we have, we have more retail than you think. You can go to Dent, I mean, just off the top of my head, you can go to Day Street Sports, right? Like, we're very lucky to have a sporting goods shop that's independently operated. Emerald City Plant Shop's been open for a few years and is doing really well.
It's a jewelry store.
It's a great place to be able to buy gifts.
I don't know how that...
Jewelry stores.
Is that powder shop still there?
Charles River Running Store has been in operation for quite some time, and that's a fantastic anchor. Modern Eyes is newer, beautiful displays that really kind of bringed up that corner of Washington Street.
I know people who come from, who are gone to that little guitar shop, it's like that town.
Yeah.
It's like a little specialty place for hardcore, yeah.
Moon Lily is open right next to the theater, got the children's bookstore, a new business, and they're doing really well.
Are they doing good?
Yeah. Fantastic. So, we have, I think we have more, more retail and small businesses than a lot of similar communities to us, and I think it's a testament to how wonderful the downtown is, and it, it builds on itself, you know, if you have a handful of successful businesses, that's better for new businesses that open up. I'd love to see that grow.
I know it's got nothing to do with us, but I have seen, 'cause I went uptown a lot in the mornings, a lot of the people that work on Washington Street park on Washington Street, and they're there all day. And they may not park in front of their store, they'll park in front of your store, and you park in front of my store. I mean, so, they're, you know, the spaces don't open up all that frequently.
Can you park all day?
Yeah.
There's no, I don't know, there may be.
There's no meters, there used to be meters, it was a while, but, you know, there is parking downtown, but you, you better want to walk, you know.
I do, I do like the, um, uh, outdoor seating that really came about because COVID and the COVID continued.
Yeah.
Because when I first moved here, I wasn't so used to outdoor seating.
Yeah.
As Lainos replaced them filing, you know?
I think the outdoor seating, yeah, I like that.
Well, I, I'll admit, I like what, um, Lainos has done, so they kind of dressed it up a little bit. It looked expensive. Let's be example what other places should do, you know? Beboz is also doing something.
Beboz has done a nice job. Beboz has done a nice job.
That Little Central Street Close Office, that's popular, right? Closing, closing in front of the theater.
Yeah, Beboz and Central Street has been very popular.
It's a great public space. I think a good measure of a public space is how many different parts of your population can use it? And I think that's a really fantastic example of, like, nearly everybody in Norwood can use that space. Like, you can go there on a weekday morning and see some seniors having a book club, and you can see teenagers there after school, and you can see families with little kids on weekends, and, you know, young adults popping by after they've gone out to get a drink or eat. Like, it's, it's an intergenerational space, and there's a lot to be said for that.
I think, going back to, to, uh... Businesses, and, and it's really going after something that, that, like Joe would do. Would actually, you know, go and knock on doors in Boston and Cambridge and say, you guys are paying stupid rents. You know, you can come to Norwood, we're, you know, twenty-five minutes away. People can take the train, you know? Some people may not like them, but I think the TIF agreements over the years have been successful, for the most part, if there are people who use them to help draw, you know, economic, we, we used to have Vanderbilt was once an economic, uh... area.
Powerhouse.
No, an economic, we, we had a, we designated it an economic target area, I believe is the correct word. And, and, you know, we offered incentives for, for that. I think, you know, continuing things like that, maybe find another ones. Maybe the, you know, maybe the, the, the Prescott Ward, you know, would be a, uh... You know, an area. I'd like to support, uh, business in those areas too, like, uh... People are afraid of the word manufacturing, but there were smaller operations or more vast operations that they might not need a million square feet, but they do some really high-tech stuff, or maybe they just need a space to, you know, do what they do, and... We have, we have more manufacturing in it, like, Tokyo.
We do, and, you know, just to go back to the question of like, who, so who's living here, who's working here? Those are good jobs for, uh, the sector of the population that isn't, you know, typically your top candidate for someplace like a biotech, right? Like, those are well-paying jobs for...
That's, that's like, what I, what I envision is that you have jobs that you can afford to live there. I think those jobs...
I gotta tell you, an economic target area that would be a good consideration is University Avenue.
What's with it?
Well, you know, Norwood owns a lot of universities, yeah. Well, it's, to a point it is. I mean, getting in there and, uh, you know, I believe that the, again, it's all private property, you know, but I think the analog property is, is ripe for a really nice, some kind of development. I mean, uh, something really nice. You know, maybe a hotel, a restaurant, some, something. Somebody with some vision could really do something nice there. And as you go down, you know, we have, uh... Was it Amazon's in there now? That's relatively new. Of course, the UPS, uh, but as you go farther down, we have a skating club. But farther down, there's some, you know, meditech was pretty much out of there. That building is fairly empty. But going back to the manufacturing, you know, we've got Mystic Scenic, which employs a lot of people, which does, you know, these, Mystic Scenic, they're fantastic, and they sell all over the country. I mean, they sell to Disney, they, they do, they, they're doing stuff for Disney World. They're doing stuff for, you know, concerts.
And they're using the tables, right? That stuff.
The displays for Disney.
Oh, yeah. They, they're unbelievable.
I remember chatting with, um, Duncan, who owns the company, and it was right before, this year, last year's Super Bowl, when that was in Vegas. He said, if you look at the displays out where they're interviewing people and advertising, like, all of those were made by businesses.
We wanna keep, we wanna keep these businesses. But the guy down by Graeger, I forget, they were in front of Scott's Longo for solar, uh, panels on the roof. Oh, it's in, the workhouse street. Right across from Graeger on the corner.
Yeah, I know, he's talking about...
They do stuff again, 'cause Kramer, 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 they do stuff again for people all around the world. It's not just, you know, they're not just making widgets. These people have, these, some of these businesses do stuff for all the people all around the world. Metal fabrications there on, on, on...
Steel arts.
Steel, steel art, you know, another place that, that does... Yeah, light plastics. Great Plastic, they're gas and electrical. They're huge. They're a huge place, and, and, you know, their offices are there and all, and so we get a lot. We got the Subaru warehouse on that as well. Yeah, we wanna keep those businesses. We wanna make an emphasis to, to keep them and not push them.
Mark Ryan, down here.
I'm sure Joe is on the wall for all that stuff.
We have a big small business, and I personally doubt some various businesses.
Yeah.
All right. Moving on to the next one. This is all about operations and transportation. Imagine an ideal future for Norwood's town buildings and operations, public services, and transportation options. Again, what would you like to change? What would you like to stay the same? In the future, what do public buildings and properties look like? Who has access to these public spaces? What is the day-to-day running of the town and then public schools look like? What types of transportation options exist? And in what ways could we make car travel, biking, walking, or public transit safer, easier, or more widely accessible?
I got nothing.
They can talk about, he said, is education or transport? Education, right?
It could be, yeah. What is the day-to-day running of the town and public schools look like?
Well, this is gonna be a big question.
This is an operations question, though.
Oh, not, not a building?
Yeah, like a building.
I think a big, a big question coming down the road for schools and is gonna be, and they know it, is are we gonna continue to have neighborhood schools, which I personally love? Or are we gonna go to a centralized elementary school? And that's, you know, our buildings are, are getting old, and, but they're, they're, I mean, you'll go through some of these old buildings, and the Boston, the Callian are nice old buildings, and people wanna see, and, uh... But that's a, that's a big issue for the town, is what do we do there?
Don't defer the maintenance.
So in, in a perfect, like, ideal world, in ten years, we're taking care of maintenance needs as they come up?
Well, I think we've addressed that with the facilities department. And I was on the committee years ago, and we looked at it, and former town manager wanted to look at it. But I think the facilities department is, is, was a good, really good thing the town did. It really is, is, you know, put the maintenance of all buildings under one, one hat. And, you know, they don't get, as we all know, the school department budget can be, you know, maneuvered. You know, they, we don't buy light bulbs because we need that five dollars over here. Now they, they can't do that. Facilities has taken on a new, uh, a new role, and I think it was a good decision.
Something we wanna keep.
We wanna keep that, we wanna keep that.
Something we want to stay the same.
I think the town, the accessibility of town buildings is pretty good. I mean, in a perfect world, well, this is an idea when we did the Hannaford's, um, project over, whatever. I was, I was...
Big Y?
Sorry?
Are you saying Big Y?
Big Y, yes.
Okay.
They, Shaw's Victory, name it, it was there.
Sorry, Ralph, come here.
I had mentioned, um, you know, you got the river going from Ellis Bond off into the distance. And I was mentioning to the guy, you know, it was a pipe dream, but hey, pull the parking lot back ten feet, give us a walking path from, from point A to as far as you can go. And then in ten years, you know, when the next property redevelops or whatever, all right, well, you take the path another hundred yards, you know? Maybe some sort of plan that you could look at the landscape and try to connect to all our islands, I guess.
It's a bad idea. That any, anybody with waterfront or riverfront, of course, the town always owns a little bit anyway. And that they, they, you know... I think we, I think that, I haven't been there in a long time, but Four Points, they, they built a nice walking path on their riverfront at one point. I haven't been down there in a long time, so, yeah. If you park in their parking lot and you go to the little parts of the river, they had a nice path that followed the river as far as their property went. And it was nice, and you could walk it, and it was open to the public, and, uh...
What about ways to make car travels safer or easier in town? Are there any particular areas where you think? Either a geographic area that could be improved through, I don't know, signage or traffic flow changes?
Got a toll booth right in front of Eight Sixteen.
Yeah, you go to the...
Is that your retirement home?
If I have to.
No, I've never really enjoyed the twelve lights that you encounter going Dean Street, Cross Route One. It just seems...
Takes forever.
Yeah, it just is...
But I will say, I will say, Brian, I was on the board when that, way back. I think that was my, that was my first chairmanship, five years under the board, was Lowe's wanted to go into that area down there.
State.
To where Monkey's Board says, and that was the whole thing. But what it ended up doing, the state designated all those lights. That was one of the most dangerous intersections around. I mean, there were, there were always accidents at the Dean Street Route One. And I don't, I don't have the figures in front of me, but I would guess that there are very few now. Yeah, it does take a...
Say that. More or less all the intersections, if you look at the heat map of crash data, all the intersections on Route One are kind of hotspots. The rotary is probably worse than the Dean Street intersection, but...
Oh, yeah. Coming up, you come up off of Route One, and you stop at the top.
The whole road is...
Yeah, and then there's always, there's always an accident.
People trying to make it too lame around.
Yeah, yeah, somebody wants to beat the, beat you to one spot, believe me, to drive there.
Maybe if we had more trees in the median, it would calm people and they wouldn't go so fast.
They would be able to see. There you go.
If the F W has trees in the middle of it?
Yeah, they put up a big fence.
They did not.
There's a huge fence right down the V F W parkway.
So you have to stop and...
Yeah, about a ten-feet-high fence.
I feel that trees in the median would help, but...
Is there like a...
Car traffic?
Like a solution to the, to the bridge, you know, on, going into South Norwood, you know, that, that intersection there? Where there are, there are interns there? Is there a realistic way to relook at that? I don't know.
Oh.
The bottom of Life Street? The Chapel shop?
Chapel shop, yeah. You gotta keep that. That's how you, that's how you pass your driver's test.
Well, how do you fail it?
It's like you're right of...
Try to do it, try to do it when you're learning on a standard, and you gotta hold the clutch as you're, you're going up that hill, and you gotta make that corner.
Ernie, you're scaring the children.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but kids don't do that at all. The worst one was the, in front of the town hall, when you're trying to hold the clutch, and the lights in St. Catherine's.
What was the hell?
When you're, when you're learning how to drive on a standard, and you, you know, you got a guy right on your butt, you can't roll back, your father yelling at you. Sorry.
I had lots of fire drills with my dad when I was, I'd drive a car where I'd freak out in the intersection. You'd have to get up and run around and switch because I couldn't get it out.
I don't know how you control the car traffic. I mean... Speed bump, I don't, speed bumps?
Are they, are they, that would be, I don't know.
Fire department does it.
Yeah, I don't blame them.
Traffic calming measures, I mean, actually Debbie's, Debbie's right, like, you can do traffic calming with landscaping islands that get closer to the roads. So the road isn't actually narrower, but it gives a perception of being narrower, and that slows cars down.
Look what Westwood...
Did you all hear that Sarah said Debbie was right? Did you hear that?
Debbie was right.
That's what I heard.
Debbie was right, it's a fantastic idea.
Check it, it's in the mess, I'm checking it out, Debbie.
I gotta get cut off, is it?
All right, Debbie was right.
So, look what Westwood did up on, was it, uh, the, Can Street?
A nightmare.
Oh my God. They put a little, they put a little house in the middle, and if you, if your car's wider than this, you can't get, they can't go by.
Slows you down.
Speed bumps and everything else.
Mark Ryan says that Vernon Street with cars parked on both sides is called traffic quieting.
Yeah.
That means you just have to wait.
I like it when my neighbors park their cars on the street and slows down traffic.
I don't know what, I don't know what the answer is on, on traffic. I mean, are there areas that you, you wouldn't wanna slow it down versus areas you would? I mean, it's a...
I'm running around his house.
Well, it's, 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 it's always, it's not slowing them down, it's, uh, it's bumpa, bumpa.
It's like, I was, and you can't leave me driving. They're being on rotaries back in the day, that was the big invention, you know? Now it's roundabouts, and they're just, yeah. They're everywhere now. I don't know what the, 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 the answer to your traffic situation is. There's always gonna be traffic coming. Maybe you have a twelve-dollar tax, you know?
Oh, Rob, you're killing me.
Of the, uh, entry tax? Yeah, just put in a little bridge, right, right on the edge of town.
Next. Anything else on that one? Any, any notes on accessibility?
Accessibility to...
Public spaces, whether it's buildings or parks and recreational opportunities?
I think everything we do now...
Any new?
Anything new is, is, and things that have been retrofitted are all being accessible.
I think one thing that's been important to me as a resident, that I've enjoyed the opportunity to kind of push forward in my professional role, is making sure that more of our outdoor spaces are accessible. So like, the Cooper Park is a good example. Those trails are made of a material that, engraved, so that a wheelchair could still go over them. So that people of all abilities can still access our outdoor spaces and enjoy, um, being able to go for a, a roller stroll through the woods. And I think that's really important, so I'd love to see more of that.
Yeah, and I think we're pretty much, anything we do now is, is with that in mind.
Okay. Sorry, next one is about protecting and adapting Norwood. Imagine the ideal future for Norwood's historic and natural places and ecosystems. This is also the place to kind of imagine our ability to adapt to climate change. So again, what would you like to change? What would you like to stay the same? Historic resources, anything specifically that you'd like to see restored or have greater protection than they have now?
More trees.
Same thing with natural places and ecosystems. What types of environmental sustainability programs might we offer in this ideal ten-year plan? How have we prepared for storms, flooding, and droughts? How can we improve our natural open spaces to increase use and enjoyment for each, of all ages and abilities? And what role does the town play in educating the public about its history and also about climate change? It's kind of wide-ranging, but thoughts on history and climate change generally?
Ms. Homewood?
I'm, I'm with the labor, but the more trees we put in and pervious concrete in parking lots, islands in parking lots, we're, we're on the heat thing, we can talk about, you know, global warming, but we got to stop putting in these... We're, we're on the heat thing, we can talk about, you know, global warming, but we got to stop putting in these huge parking lots without islands in them. Big Y comes to mind. I think we gotta make them put in islands and more green space along Route one. If we want to go with climate change, okay, I'll, I'll, I'll go with that, but I just want it to look nicer. And it's just a big giant blacktop. We need to do something about our parking, our parking amount. Even at, light at Big Y, that's not parked off, Rob, great idea, we should have had a walking park, but they wouldn't even give us a sidewalk along the side there, if you recall.
I do.
It's like bumper cars in that place. And it's a great store. That's it, I'm gonna lose my connection, but I'm gonna harp on trees until you bury me.
It's a great spot for it.
Bury your head under a tree.
I love that idea, Rob.
Debbie's gonna love it. I hate islands in parking lots. Hate them.
What?
I hate islands in parking lots, hate them. Put that down, what's islands in parking lots? Put them in so that the developer can plant some shrubs that won't grow, so he can meet the zoning. And it's hard to plow around them, it's, I think, I love the Starmarket parking lot, it's a beautiful parking lot unless you have to drive through it. I, one of my biggest regrets on the planning board is, is what we did to the Starmarket parking lot. They've closed up, they've closed the, you know, it's, it's, they closed the lane to back out and get, and it's just my own thing, but that's fine, that's fine. Beautification, I have no problem beautification, just let's do it.
Would you, would you like group those, those trees and plantings together in like one area?
That's fine. I just, I just, I'm just not a big island in the parking lot guy.
Because Ernie, they drive through, they cut through, it's like insanity down there.
Where?
If you have an island, it's not just for beautification and water retention, it's to keep people from cutting from one side to the other.
Just, I just, I'm not a big fan of them, that's all.
That's fine, we could build, put them in. Some more trees, right Debbie?
Yes, and if the, if the islands were a little wider, the trees wouldn't be dead.
I knew that, yeah, I know I expected that.
Ah, it's too easy, it's just too easy, Ernie.
What about historic resources? What parts of town would you like to see receive more protection than they have now? Any areas for listing, any kind of historic master planning you'd like to see?
I think.
Specific buildings?
I think that we talked about in the first question, a lot of them. I will say, years ago, didn't go far, I was on a committee, I think Paul Murphy was on it as well, Judith, Judith Howard. She wanted to designate downtown as a historic district. And there were a lot of problems with that because, you know, some of these historic districts get out of control and you can't paint you how the same people white.
That's natural, it's work.
I think we talked about most of those buildings we'd like to keep. Some are private, you know, I, I, it would be a shame to lose the Willet Mansion, private property. It would be a shame to lose the, to lose the railroad station, you know, private property. It would be a shame to lose, you know, some of these, the beautiful homes, the dark road days, you know, again, private property.
Do you think there's any public incentives that could be offered to try to encourage preservation or restoration of historical?
Well, I think that if we pass that bylaw, that would allow some, some changes to it. You know, it's just. You know, and I'm, and obviously I'm not, you know, it's, you can do with it, you own it, you can do with it what you want, you know, but. It would be a shame to lose some of those, we have very few left, you know, we have very few left.
Yes, Debbie, go ahead.
What was our, the, the young man that went to, I've drawn a blank on his name, that went to Walpole? Pat, he had a great idea that if we get people to love, you know, if you build it, they'll come, if we give them a reason why they're looking at these buildings, he was gonna do something on this thing and all you have to do is point it.
Maybe it was like a, kind of like geolocating kind of app or something, you know, this pretty spot.
Right, this used to be the, the bowling alley where so and so was, and this was, and it gives you a reason people that aren't from Norwood come there and look. Which I'm belaboring the Space Center, but you got a ton of people that didn't know Norwood, where Norwood was, and now they're coming there to do the Magic Room and the Bars and the Little Bird and, and I'm getting calls from people going, I didn't know you've had all this cool stuff, well, we got a lot of cool stuff, but we have to tell them that we have the cool stuff. I mean, everybody loves the chapel and, you know, because we told them about it. Memorial Hall, didn't we have a couple of weddings there in the last few months in Memorial Hall?
Yeah.
Something that I, to Debbie's point, historic, I brought it up years ago to the Historic Commission, but this is, I'm going back ten years. There's nothing wrong with a bronze plaque or a plaque on a site that used to be something. You know, we've got a couple of stones, you know, this is where Aaron Guilde, you know, was dead during the Revolutionary War, St. Dedham. You know, this is the site of, you know, the, the old Guilde School or the Everett School, you know, which was from eighteen something to nineteen forty was the Guilde's, the Everett School. This was, you know, the site of, even though it's not, you know, the issue wasn't there anymore, but this was the site. And I always thought the Historic Commission should lead that change.
May I? I know, you know, there's just not enough bodies to do it, but that makes a town interesting for those of us that like to go to a town and say, oh, that's the Willet House. Doesn't mean anything to them, or they can go look it up if they want to. But if we could, you know, again, that's what I would like to see, but it costs forty nine dollars to put a plaque out, plaque on your house and it's, some people still call and don't know how to find out about that. So, again, that's what I would like to see. You can, you can grow and be progressive and have great businesses, but you can still have something that's historic, that's history.
It was the last peach tree on Peach Street.
You got sick and died.
Sorry, Debbie.
You can plant a new one.
Oh, you just wait till I get back, Ernie, I'm coming late.
I don't know if there would be any permanence to it, but like Pat's idea about pictures and historical information. If you have a plaque and this, this is the permanence thing, you have like that scan the barcode thing and it just popped up.
Yeah, like a walking tour almost.
Yeah, like the, what are those things called? That I don't know how to use. And I'm gonna give a plug out here to the, if I can, shameless plug, the Old Parish Cemetery Volunteers.
Oh, you're fabulous.
Phenomenal, what they, if you've ever been up in that cemetery three years ago and saw it, the condition it was in, and you go up there now, it is night and day. It is absolutely beautified, I tell, should tell everybody at home, go up there and take a walk around. And I'm also gonna give another shameless plug, if you don't mind, Mr. Chan, or. They are planning on the Old Parish Cemetery Volunteers, which I am not a member of, but I support them. April ninth, April seventeenth this year, or is it seventeenth, fifteenth? Yeah, I should know that, it was the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the Battle of Concorde in Lexington. And there were sixty people from South Dedham, which is now Norwood, went that day and militated in Dedham and went on to actually get on the return battle in, in what is now Arlington. And twenty or thirty of them are buried up in that Old Parish Cemetery, they were Revolutionary War veterans. So, keep an eye out for that coming up. But, but that place is great, and going back to my point, there's a, a, a group of individuals, volunteers, who took it upon themselves to, you know, really.
Get some CPA money.
And, and really do some beautiful work up there. And if.
You're welcome.
Other things and.
These are some balls of that.
What's that?
The Memorial Feather, we, we did a lot of cleaning.
Yep, and.
It's amazing, maybe you come back the next week or something, you're like, oh wow, yeah.
I mean, it's, it's what they've done is phenomenal and, and other groups could do that, could take something and do ownership of something.
They, they got CPA money, CPA money. May I?
Yeah.
Forty years ago, or thirty years ago, we had a book that, I've got one somewhere at home, that told all these fun things about Norwood. You know, age and people that were famous, and I didn't know Willet or any of these people, and when you moved into town, you got one. You remember that?
No.
I wonder if that could be incorporated, I know the library does a lot of like, Norwood 101 for newcomers. And I think that could be a cool thing to expand upon if they're not already doing it. To offer kind of a basic history 101 component.
I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the Morse House. There was a group, again, a group of volunteers that saved the Morse House a few years ago, but if it wasn't for the volunteer group that took over the, the Morse House. You know, that would have been nuts, you know, probably not would have been saved. And so there's, you know, and so I'm probably, there may be some other, other groups out there that I don't know about, but those are two that come to mind, where a group of volunteers took it upon themselves and saved a very historical building. And so there's two instances where groups can do this, and I think that's, you know, I, I, I'm a firm believer in teaching kids in Norwood history. I think they do something in the third grade on, on Norwood history, but I think that it's not a bad idea for, to, you know, when kids get to be.
Mr. Chairman said, Ernie, you mentioned about something going on for the two hundred and fiftieth. To read off the website, it's April nineteenth.
April nineteenth, that's right.
Yeah, at ten AM, the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the Battle of Lexington Concord, join the colonial boys on a procession from Norwood Town Hall to the Old Parish Cemetery grave site of South, of South Dedham, Norwood, Revolutionary War veterans. So they're procession, you go there and see the.
Yeah, they're gonna have some, there'll be more on it, but, 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 you know, so Norwood has a history.
I would love to see in the next ten years, and I, I wish my office right now had the bandwidth to help support a project like this. Maybe Historic Society, the Historic Commission, maybe N C M, I would love to see an oral history project. Alex and I were talking about this the other day, Alex had gone down to Helen and Ollie's store in South Norwood to distribute some complant flyers, just to hang up. And.
Oral history.
And got some stories, you know, from either Helen or Ollie, were kind of telling tales of how, you know, Norwood used to be in one way or another. You know, Alex was fascinated and came back and kind of retold them to me. I would love to have some way to capture and preserve the storytelling about Norwood's history. Not necessarily of the governors and the business leaders that invested money and had mansions, but like the stories that you tell about businesses that used to exist or, you know.
The hidden history.
The hidden history.
N C M has done something, N C M is.
Have like a recorded oral history project.
They've been doing some interviews.
That's nice, yeah.
It's a senior center right here.
Yeah, I would love that.
I'll give you a quick story on Nick's, Capella's, it was a hard one. So when I was a kid, my dad would take me there and Helen and Ollie's dad, Nick, you know, ran it and he, my father would need a, a piece of pipe that, you know, was, you know, half left, half right and, you know, went this way. And the downstairs in that place, the cellar, you get on these rickety old stairs and he, the place was, I, I don't think it had a light bulb in it, and Nick would go through these wooden boxes and he would dig and dig and he'd find it, you know. He'd find some old thing and, you know, he'd know exactly what, what you need to do, very interesting. And then, of course, you go next door to Roseanne's Bakery and get something for a ride home, but that's gone now. Very interesting place. But anyway.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
The Norwood movie is supposed to be coming out in April. Maybe we could get in Jerry Keller to do something on oral history and go around and, and interview people like Helen and Ollie and Ernie Koski, because he's already known to man. I miss your father, Ernie.
Me too. But a lot of his.
Yep, but that might be something that, you know, you get some volunteers or they, the kids that are into stuff up at the high school, maybe they could go out and do that. And tie it in with a Norwood movie.
That's a great idea, I wish I had. There was a girl at the high school that had to do a paper and she, probably history class, this is about two years ago. My mother was ninety-eight at the time and maybe ninety-nine. And the girl, the high school girl did her paper on the Women's Community Committee in Norwood. And she came and interviewed my mother, who was the past president and joined it in nineteen forty-nine, forty-eight, when she got on the Women's Community Committee. It was fascinating and, and, and I think to Debbie's point, we get the high school, you know, I know they got a lot to do, but you get those kids to, like the AP History Class, I know Patty Fanning has done a lot with them and, and about that, but. I think it's important because the, because the old timers are, you know.
We're dying.
There's no more old timers and, and, and the, the new group of people, somebody's gonna have to, you know, pick this up. And they will, they will, to, to, you know.
I like the intergenerational aspect of preserving history, there's something really special about that.
Yeah, I think so.
Anything else on this topic?
Well, the other thing on it, we talked about education, history, historical, history's pretty easy to talk about.
Climate change was the other one on this one. I mean, obviously this group does a lot of work with stormwater management, which is one of the best things we can do to prepare for hazards.
Yeah, I think the town's got that and got more coming, I guess.
Trees, we need trees.
Thank God we didn't talk about bike lanes.
Okay, activity six, ways to play in and experience Norwood. We're imagining the ideal future for Norwood's recreational offerings and arts and cultural spaces and events. What events, programs and places are we offering? How do the arts and cultural programs enrich the Norwood community? What types of public gathering spaces exist in the town and what kinds of amenities do those spaces have? And how do people find out about them?
I love the Fallout Shelter, I don't get there as much and I know it's a private, it's not.
It's okay, but it's a private, private spot, these don't all have to be public spaces.
Yeah, but, yeah, spaces like that where you can kind of foster.
Fallout Shelter is a gem, the Fallout Shelter is a gem. That is the best, but I, I'm gonna, again, I'm gonna applaud, I'm, I'm gonna assume it's the Cultural Council and the, the Concerts on the Common Group. Be very popular, you know, we used to just have Wednesday nights and then they had, then they introduced Sunday nights. So now we have two nights a week downtown. Plus they've, as it's grown, they've introduced these winter concerts at the high school.
And there's kids concerts on Tuesday nights.
Kids concerts now, there's.
There's a Caroline concert.
I'm, and I'm gonna, I'm probably wrong and the, the school department will yell at me because I'm probably wrong. The only thing, I, I think the Cultural Council and those Concerts on the Common Council, Committees have done great and they're expanding. You know, they're adding, 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 which is great. I would like, and the high school, you know, auditorium for the winter concerts is a great venue. I don't know if they do it, I would like to see. I don't know if they do it, I would like to see maybe a few more concerts with, we have such a tremendous fine arts program. Maybe the Madrigals, I know they perform once in a while, certain places, but a night at the, where the jazz band or the ensembles, or whatever they call them, you know, would have open to the public, free concerts. And maybe they do this, and maybe they don't. So, if they do, I apologize.
How do we learn about these events? So, if these events are happening, how would you find out about them?
Social media, right now, it's social media. And NCM, I have good friends at Norwood Community Media, you know, their reels and what's coming on and, you know, you know, things like that. But I guess today, you know, maybe there's some ads in the paper occasionally. I know the library has a little thing in the newspaper, they always have something.
The library has so much.
The library has so many programs going on.
So many programs, there's something literally for everybody at the library.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, so, and those always seem to be well-attended.
Very well-tended.
And so, that would be my, I, I think that, you know, I sound like I'm pro-Norwood here, but I think we do some really wonderful things.
Yeah.
How about a Norwood museum? Wouldn't that be fun? Then they could point out whoever goes on there.
That's what I said, the jail would be the perfect spot for it.
The jail?
The jail.
Exactly, so how do we get behind that?
Move the voting machines out of there.
I thought we were using the jail for criminals.
Not anymore.
Jail is.
That's where we put all the.
Papers, full paper.
That's where all the voting. That's where all the voting machines are.
They're in the garage part. The rest of it's full of file cabinets. I think it should be the Norwood.
Percy.
What else, anything on arts and culture?
I think they do a good job. Should we, do we need to speak on like funding, to keep funding available for those types? Like how is, is this just visioning?
Is this visioning? It doesn't have to be problem-solving. You know, it can be the start with the pie in the sky, what would you like to see happen? But if you have specific ideas for programs that you'd love to see in place, then that could be another thing to include here, too. I'd love to see more public art. I'd love to see more opportunities for public sculpture or murals or in the places and ways that they make sense. I'd love to see a showcase for local artists around town in our communities.
We were gonna do a mural of town, but it fell flat in the 150th committee. They put the one up at the Space Center, which, but there was gonna be one on Clonan Street, but it fell through. We did do the boxes, the electrical boxes.
And those are great.
Which were great, and those really, people really got into those. And if you ever look at those electrical boxes, like what paid the girl in the 150th celebration, some of them really put some thought into it.
The one in front of the place and fire station is fantastic.
I got, I talked about Lady, I took a picture of it.
She was there for.
She's detailed.
Super detailed.
But then you look at the ones, like the one down in front of Hawes Pool, it's got the yellow ducks, well, the duck race in April, you know, I mean, it ties into the river there. I mean, some of these people really put some thought into it, and, you know, I don't know how we could do that, but.
Going back to your comment earlier about how you'd love to see more demographic groups involved in town activities, I'd like to see more like cultural festivals and the community groups in town to be able to celebrate, you know.
Well, that was, yeah, that's what, they used to have those.
Food, music.
They used to have.
Celebration of the diversity that we have in Norwood.
The Bald School did it on there, they had a, they had an anniversary, and the Bald School did it, and, because it's such a diverse school, you know, I mean, I don't know how many different nationalities go there. And I think it was during the 150th, I think Mike Thornton would let charge on that, and the people down there, and each table, you know, there was a Syrian table and a Polish table, and there were different, a lot of nationalities, Portuguese, you name it, there was like thirty different tables, and they had samples of food, and people were dressed in their costume, and it was really, it was really well-attended, and it was very interesting. And the town used to do that every couple of years, because I know my parents used to be in their Polish costume, and my mother would bring pierogies, you know, and that's a great idea. I would, the Bald School was a great place for that, and they did it once, and it was, it really, it was really, really well-attended, and they had, you know, samples of food from different nationalities, they had entertainment from different nationalities, and hats off to Mikey Thornton, he ran that, and the Bald School really did a great job with that.
I think if you have music, food, atmosphere, everybody's gonna want to go out and, you know.
That's something that's all great.
Yeah.
Norwood day attracts, I think, far outside the borders of this town.
Well, yeah, but it's, it doesn't do the, it's not really, it's more of a, it's not as cultural as this.
Well, I mean, in terms of like, there's already a buzz, so if we develop something, we could say.
Yeah, you could, and again, that, that may be a Cultural Council thing, I mean, and maybe, you know, cultural doesn't mean concerts all the time, and in art, I think that something like that would.
So, Ernie, where's a good place to get pierogies? Is there a Polish church with a bunch of?
There's a, the closest place around here is, is a Polish market in Stodden. But it's right, it's right in Stodden, nice Polish market in Stodden, but if you go down to, right over the Bellingham, Wunsakert Island, Krakows Market, oh my God, that's the place. Oh, that's the place, kielbasa, fresh kielbasa. Unless you wanna go to Boston, one of the Andrews Square, you can go by one step over to Andrews Square.
All right.
I digress, sorry.
This is our last activity, one you all know well as planning board members. Complans contain many different elements, housing, transportation, open space, et cetera. There can be tensions between elements as well as synergies, ways they work together. It's important to recognize where hopes for one element conflict or work against hopes for another element in order to brainstorm solutions that balance competing goals. So, a few reflections on our discussion today about our community vision and goals. Are there some tension points that we can identify, or some potential synergies, ways that elements can work together?
There's tension.
What are the biggest tensions that you can think of?
Where retail or commercial and residential intersect, or districted.
This is a rather pronounced resistance to high-density housing. A lot of people are sort of rather aggressive against it.
And that's a tension with what?
That's a tension. The, any.
You mean what's on the other side?
Any developer who wants to do that.
Or more broadly, the housing crisis.
Yeah.
Building higher-density housing is a response to a shortage of housing everywhere. What about?
Synergy.
Yeah, what are the things that we can do that work together?
The development of commercial business, because they have the taxes they pay. I think that everybody likes the fact that everybody wants more businesses.
Makes it a more affordable place to live.
I'll give you another tension on a, on a local town, and I'm not pro-Clon, but I'm actually pro, but the airport. We have a municipal airport that if you're talking to somebody and you wanna, you want these people to come to Norwood, and, you know, you wanna be able to bring their executives in or something and fly them in, or you wanna promote the airport as a resource for business, you wanna fly whatever out of Norwood, or you wanna open another flight school, or you wanna bring the State Department, the State Police Helicopter Squad back to Norwood or something. It's great for Norwood, but there's tension as far as expansion of the airport or overuse of the airport, so that's a tension.
Yeah, but it could also be a synergy with commercial growth.
It could be on that end, yeah.
Do an airshow.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, the rec department and the airport team up every year for the Wings and Wheels event, which is one of our most popular and well-attended events in town. They have hundreds of.
Yep, it's a great thing. It's an expansion of the touch truck, you know, when they started that, now they have to touch a plane, yeah.
Thinking to like the climate change, flooding kind of issue, that can be a synergy with our efforts on redevelopment, because with every redevelopment that we have, we incorporate updated stormwater standards.
We may have upgrade.
And the work that you all do in cycle and review, you know, when you redevelop, you're usually heading up with a project that's better for flood management and risk mitigation than it was before, so that's a synergy.
I think that, maybe it's a synergy, but I think the businesses in Norwood, especially the small businesses, are very good, and most towns, it's the way it is, but are very good to the town as far as donations. You know, we have a block fund, but, you know, if you need a hundred bucks, you know, for your little league team, some sub-shop is gonna, pizza place is gonna give you the hundred bucks, or they're gonna put their name on a calendar, or they're gonna buy a table at your trivia night, or they're gonna, they're gonna do something. I think that the businesses in Norwood, and I've been on a lot of fundraising committees, especially with Jerry Miller, but they've been extremely gracious, not all, I mean, some of the big corporations, it's tough, you know, I gotta go to, you know, to the home office and all that, but have been very, very good to the town as far as donations, helping out the kids, helping out, you know, just being, the last one was the 150th that I was on, and, you know, raising, you know, we raised, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, and, and so, I think that it's, and these people want nothing for it, and so I'm very thankful for that, and for a lot of our businesses are just wonderful, wonderful to the town, and a lot of them don't even, you don't even know it, but they do.
Very generous.
Very generous.
Anything else before we wrap up?
So, I should know this, but is there in the assessment, current assessment of the town, like crunching numbers, like if we like how the tax burden is now, why is the tax burden that way? How do we maintain that structure or that, you know, cost of living or quality of life? How do you maintain that and kind of reflect that on our current zoning and changes that may or may not be?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know that we have anything clearly identified in the plan yet. So far, it's just been existing conditions and kind of talking about trends. I think generally, you know, like Joe was talking about earlier, preserving our commercial base is really an important component of that. Our economic sector, our commercial sector here in Norwood really does support the affordability as residents that we pay in our taxes and ensures the quality of services we receive are high relative to our expenses at the household level. So, I think that's a big part of it, and there's a lot of ways that we can support our businesses through people like Joe and his position, but also zoning. Going back to our earlier discussion about the DPH, it's choices like that where we decide how to pursue the highest and best uses of each property. Some, sometimes the highest and best use is a multifamily housing development, sometimes the highest and best use is a commercial structure or a place for manufacturing, personal businesses, so proactive, careful planning, I mean, this whole exercise. All right, so I'm gonna pass these around for you to take home and start thinking about who you want to invite to your meeting at a box. Doesn't have to be at your house, maybe you could support some of our local businesses, Castle Island or Irish Brewing, maybe.
The Brookside.
The Brookside.
Friday mornings, be ready, guys.
Okay. You can fill them out and drop them off right at my office, you can call me, I'll come and pick it up at your house, take photos of it and send it to me and then email. You don't wanna have to.
I'll have to.
Close to.
Sure.
Vice Chair of the Complants.
Yeah. Friday morning, Brookside.
Be there or be square.
All right, perfect. Thank you so much, all of you. Before you go, is it okay if I take a group picture?
Oh, that's why he's got his tie on.
I'm only doing it because he has the tie on.
Oh, where's Jocelyn? We gotta go with Jocelyn one round.
I can Photoshop them in.
All right, Joe. Shall I slide down?
Smile, you guys.
Should we stand next to the screen?
I think we did that last year.
Yeah, you'll be the dot in the corner, Debbie.
Yeah, with the D, I get it, Ernie.
Night of attendance.
Nacho, Debbie Nacho.
Before you go, please endorse the Fails Ab subdivision plan that's over there, there's some Sharpies, make sure you sign each page before you, and Rob, wrap up your meeting.
Oh, I'll make a motion, are we all done with the agenda, Mr. Chairman? I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A second. A motion and a second, adjourn, roll call, vote, Debbie.
All right, did I come out? Aye.
Aye.
Ernie Petchowski, yes. Ryan Nash, yes.
Rob Amber, yes.
All right, thank you, good night.